Alright, we're at the Fruitland Park City Hall Complex. At the corner of College Avenue and Berkman. And, uh, we're gonna go inside and see how the City Hall meeting runs. And that's it.
If you're part of this meeting, we're gonna do the best that we can do to accommodate you. But at this time, as fire people first in party, this unsafe room because we are over capacity. And if something was to happen, we would have a major problem. I'd even have people have to block the exit doors and things like that. So if you are standing, I'm gonna ask you to move out of the rooms. And we're gonna try to make it a little bit safer for you.
So I can take a video? But you guys have something to do? Thanks.
For the fire fees, it's going to be tabled. It's going to be tabled until next Friday. We will have a special meeting next Friday. It'll be held at United Community Methodist Church, which is right across the street. But we have capacity of four or 500 people, so everybody can come in and listen. Without having speakers out there, not everybody can hear what we're saying. You want to make sure everybody can hear what we're saying. So next Friday, 6:00 PM, we will have the budget, and the village, and the fire fees at Community United Methodist Church. So we have, everybody who wants to come and hear us can hear us. It will be noticed in the paper, it'll be noticed on our websites. You guys have your little village thing, so go and tell your neighbors that's where it'll be next Friday. We're going to have a rest of the meeting tonight now.
What's 2,015 people, is that a word?
No, your websites you go on, your neighborhood things, your community things, go and tell your neighbors who might have, who might have left, that the meeting's going to be then. To make sure everybody who is here knows when the meeting is. It will be noticed in the paper, it will be noticed on our website. But it will be noticed outside, but tell your neighbors too. So if they didn't know, they know now, it's changed.
Ask John if there's any need for us to stay. Should we stay? Go. That's fine. No, I'm gonna be... Alright, don't blame her.
...by Pastor Hart, before the field, the Eagle Desk. Bible Baptist Church, filed by the Pledge of Allegiance, from Chief Eric Lewis, if he will stand.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Bell?
Here.
I say them to, and Major Shire.
I am here. Alright, before we get started, most of everybody's gone. The speaking decorum, if you would like to speak at the public comments section of the meeting, please announce your name at the podium. If you live in the villages, please tell us what area you live in. Please make your comments on the testimony or items before us. You will be given the opportunity to speak on the public comments portion of the meeting and his color portions to comment as well. You will be timed three minutes, you may not yield to another speaker. Please allow remarks to be civil and not repetitive. Be fain for behavior if speech interrupts or intimidates a speaker. Do not applaud, shout, or cheer. You are to address the City Commission, not the audience. Please do not stand in support or opposition of other people. And if you're conversing within the chamber, please take it outside. Again, with the City Commission, before we speak, you must be recognized by the mayor, and must have a good meeting. Tonight, item free special presentations. Florida's Governor's Proclamation, 2018, is intergenerational, intergenerational month in Florida. In the city of Fruitland Park, we have two ladies who are over 100 years old. We're giving both of them proclamations. Whereas in 2014, the United States Department of Commerce and Economics and Statistics Administration, Census Bureau has projected that the number of US residents aged 65 years and older between 2015 and 2060 will increase to a total of 105.2%. And whereas, in 1916, Fruitland Park was evolving as a community with a post office, a school, churches, hotels, a community center with a tennis court, golf courses, attracting hundreds of tourists who came here to boat and hunt. And whereas, during this part in history, although the horse and buggy was a mode of transportation, records show there were 44 registered drivers of automobiles in Fruitland Park. And whereas, due to the large agricultural development, Lake Griffin, one of the largest lakes in Florida, had water shipments to Jacksonville. And Whitney subdivision was surrounded with valuable groves. The railroad truck center served as the largest, most profitable center in the world. Whereas, Ms. Bessie Hoffman, a 75-year resident, held many garden parties for the children at the town in Fruitland Park. And whereas, Ms. Hoffman, since the early 1950s, sometimes with her late husband, advocated before the City Commission to make the community a better place to live, work, and play, and actively supported the staff of the former volunteer fire department before it was restructured in the late 90s. And whereas, the city of Fruitland Park proudly recognizes with honor, respect, and admiration for our centurions, who possess a wealth of knowledge and wisdom with stories and traditions from a time gone by. Now, therefore, be it I, Christopher Cheshire, Mayor of the city of Fruitland Park, Florida, recognize that Saturday, September 22nd, 2018, as National Centurion Day in Fruitland Park. On behalf of the City Commission, the residents of Fruitland Park congratulate Bessie Hoffman, who has reached the age of over 101 years old. Express admiration for her lifetime accomplishments, inspiration, and endurance that she represents, and wish her good health. We're gonna present this to Ms. Hoffman, and, uh, Joe Mosley's here with us, is that correct? You wanna take a picture? You have any words you want to say? You have any words you want to say?
I would like to thank everybody here today. I would like to thank everybody here today. I have lived here a long time, I've enjoyed Fruitland Park, and I've seen it grow from almost, you know, I can't say nothing but start. And I think it's a beautiful place. I haven't been in this building, gorgeous, but I can see legally fine. And I'm part of hearing, I can't hear, see it very good, but I can appreciate what people out here are doing for Fruitland Park. And I hope we can continue, even after I'm gone. I hope and pray that God will bless this town forever. And, well, I know we have a lot of good friends everywhere all over the world, but we have our best friend right here under our thumb that we could love and take care of. And I appreciate it so much. I guess that's all I can say, just love being here, and so thankful that I'm able to attend this meeting. I've been to many, many city meetings, and as for fights and fusses and cussing and good words and love and understanding and patience, we've had all that, I found it. But look at us today, we're still here. God has blessed us, and He will keep blessing us every day. He does, but we have to ask Him and act like we want it, you know? And I'm just, I know there's a lot of new people here I've never heard of before, and never seen before, but that's wonderful. We're all here together for one thing, to keep our children happy, growing up, and being well, and staying out of trouble, and being real proud of their parents and vice versa. And I want to thank you today for all this love that you've given me today. And I know Joe here appreciates the same thing, and he's had accusations, which has been been of a heart, thanks for having him here as he is. But you know, God will bless him, and he goes alone and prays to heal, and he gets healing slowly. And I'm so thankful that I'm here, and thank you nice people for bringing me and getting me here. I love each and every one of you, and God bless.
I hope I am here. As fucky as that is, I'm gonna go on. Alright. Here's the next one, Ms. Mary Ashbury. Whereas, the United States Department of Commerce and Economics and Statistics and Mrs. State of Census Bureau projected that the number of US residents aged 65 and older between 2015 and 2060 will increase to 105.2% for Florida's older population being highest in the nation. And whereas, the longevity of life is a blessing for an individual, where the community benefits from the knowledge and creative experiences that this individual brings to all. Whereas, the city of Fruitland Park recognizes with respect and admiration the contributions of our senior citizens naked to community. And whereas, Ms. Mary Odessa Ashbury, daughter of a Colmire, was born on March 15th, 1990, 1919, in Westover, Pennsylvania. Moved to Ohio at the age of eight to live with her aunt and uncle. Married Jefferson Asbury at Derrickville, Maryland, in October 1934. And whereas, Ms. Ashbury moved to Peach Bottom, Pennsylvania, to 170-acre green buyer farm for 17 years, raised cows for milk and butter, chickens for eggs, and pigs for meat, planted corn and soybeans, produced hay for sale, tended a large garden, and canned and preserved in froze food for the winter months. And whereas, Ms. Ashbury, having retired as a domestic engineer and being a busy mother, moved to Florida in 1968. First to Bellevue, then to Ellington, and now resides in the city of Fruitland Park. Whereas, Ms. Ashbury raised 13 children, nine boys and four girls, and has three, four grandchildren, and is a proud great-grandmother of 28. Whereas, Ms. Ashbury loves to play cards and thoroughly enjoys the activities held at the cities of Fruitland Park Senior Social, where she claimed this is a wonderful community, a real hometown feel, and close to everything. Her dog's name is Bingo. And whereas, Ms. Ashbury enjoys traveling and seeing the world, and has witnessed a lot of changes in the hundred years from the horse and buggy to the span change and the intimate, and she wonders what next. Now, therefore, be it I, Christopher Cheshire, Mayor of the city of Fruitland Park, Florida, on behalf of the City Commission, have residents recognize Saturday, September 22nd, 2018, as National Centurion Day in Fruitland Park, and honor Ms. Mary Ashbury for her long life, prosperity, and wish for many more. And she's gonna be with Ms. Mary Judy Bluff, September? I hear you've got five generations here, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And this baby's named after her.
Yeah, well, hold yours together, take a picture of the little baby.
We have that too, Charles.
Oh, sorry. Come on back. Would you like to say a couple words? No. Thank you very much. Right now, we're gonna recognize but not read. September 9th is National Grandparents' Day. September 6th is National Reader Book Day. But then we're gonna do the, the students. Whereas, September 6th, 2018, has been recognized by National Day as National Reader Book Day. Whereas, in 1455, Johann Gutenberg, Latin Bible mass-printed, and produced the first book in Germany. And in 1876, Mark Twain's Tom Sawyer was published and was one of the first books to be written on a typewriter. And whereas, around 1908, the community library located in the small hometown of Fruitland Park was used as a guild hall for the Holy Trinity Episcopal Church, where books were donated by the Boskew and Dwight families. And wherein, 1956, due to lack of interest and with the aid of the Lions Club, the library remained open. Whereas, in 1970, the town's catalog system was developed. The first salary town in Fruitland Park Library reported that 128 books were checked out. And on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, 97 books and 141 audiobooks were checked out at the city of Fruitland Park Library. And whereas, before the internet, books were the main source of storing, accessing, and spreading knowledge. And in our high-speed era of technology, and our patrons have more access to prints, books in print, audio, and ebooks than past generations, which makes text-based communication an intricate part of our lives. And whereas, cultures around the world have storytelling traditions that date back centuries, and we use stories as our main method of communicating with the world to reinforce bonds and strengthen relationships. Studies show that people who read frequently show less signs of stress and have higher problem-solving abilities, improve language comprehension, critical thinking, and communication skills. Now, therefore, be it I proclaim that Christopher Cheshire, the mayor of the city of Fruitland Park, recognize September 6th, 2018, as National Reader Book Day in Fruitland Park. And whereas, the Fruitland Park Library's staff reads to kindergarten and first-grade classes at Fruitland Park Elementary School, and further encourage citizens to continue to read their children, parents, and grandparents who volunteer in reading programs in the school library. And? And we have, from Fruitland Park Elementary, the National Honors Society students of the 2018-2019. I have their bios here. I'm not sure if we want to read all of them, but we've got, if you guys want to all come up and be recognized, I will. You guys want to say your names? Why don't you go down the line, you can say your name.
Are you ready? Are you here first?
My name is Evan Whitecaster.
My name is Christopher Hyatt.
I'm Nathan Woodaker.
Mackenzie Osher.
My name is Ella Prater.
My name is Trini Baum.
Wesley Young.
Brittany Good.
Isabel Witter.
Emily Friend.
Jacob Dykes.
Rudy Starr.
Troy Godwin.
Camila Cacol.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say that not only are these children some of the brightest students on our campus, but they are some of the most loving and caring students on our campus, who lends a helping hand within the community as well as in our schoolhouse. They look out for one another, as well as the other 700-plus students on our campus. So I know we already clap for them, but can we give them just another round of applause?
Thank you guys very much for coming.
Thanks, guys, for coming. We appreciate it.
You don't want to stay and listen to the budgets?
I don't want to.
So we looked at, the department was doing Communities for a Lifetime since 2000. AARP joined the World Health Organization Network in 2012. And we were both doing the same thing, engaging communities across the state to make their communities more age-friendly. So we decided to join forces and have a bigger impact across the state. We're also working very closely with the Department of Health. Surgeon General Phillips has tasked her local health departments in each county across the state to join forces with different community council members and join these committees in creating age-friendly communities across the state. We're also in regular contact and partnership with the Department of Transportation. We're always addressing different needs. The Florida Find a Ride organization, now you can log on to their website and easily find a ride, whatever county you live in. So you just type where you would like to go, and it gives you all the options within your community of where you would like to go. Next slide, please. So Communities for a Lifetime, Fruitland Park joined this initiative in 2014. The county was also a part of this initiative. When the department started this initiative, we engaged over 119 counties, cities, throughout the state. And our goal now is, now that we have the partnership with AARP, and their, you know, sustainable program, that's part of the World Health Organization, it's an international effort across the United States and internationally. We're really challenging all of our communities that have been a part of the C-FALL network to consider learning more about what the age-friendly network has to offer. And we're working to transition communities into that age-friendly network. Next slide, please. The World Health Organization identifies eight domains of livability. These eight domains really look at different areas within a community that can be addressed to hopefully allow community members to remain active, engaged, and safe and secure within their environment. Those eight domains look at outdoor spaces and parks, housing, transportation, social participation, social inclusion, healthcare, communication, education, and civic engagement and employment. So it really covers a wide variety within our community. And if we look at these different things, usually when communities join the network, they do a survey based on what these eight domains of livability. And as you can probably guess, a lot of communities come, come out of those surveys with having to address housing and transportation issues. Nine times out of 10, those are the biggest areas of interest. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna let our partners with AARP who have joined me today to just tell you briefly a little bit about what a livable community is and how to join that network.
Good evening. My name is Jerome Williams, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce AARP's network of age-friendly communities. I hope everyone can see, because I don't see that well, that's why I got these glasses off. And this dog doesn't agree with me, you can go to the next slide. This first slide, and if you want the light down, we can turn it down. I just might struggle to something. But this first slide explains what a livable community is. Everyone wants a livable community, where you're safe, you feel comfortable, you're secure, you have affordable and appropriate housing, transportation options, and you can live there if you're eight or eighty. Next slide, please. So this is what a age-friendly community offers. Transportation options, whether you walk, ride, or bike, you want sidewalks, you want feel comfortable doing it, a diversity in housing. Those are some of them, I'm gonna go fast. So the next slide. This age-friendly work has really became a movement in the United States. As she mentioned, since 2012, when AARP became the US affiliate, we started with 10 communities. Today, there are over 290 communities in the United States. In Florida, you can see the listing, we have 23, and we're hoping to make the state an age-friendly state. Next slide. Age-friendly. When you say age-friendly, a lot of people look at old age-friendly, that's why we say livable community, because we want the community for a lifetime, where you can do the same thing if you're eight or eighty, at the new recreation center you're building. There'd be opportunities for youth because of recreational, but there should also be opportunities for seniors, since you have a large senior population. We can go to the next slide. Okay, these are the eight domains of livability. We're pregnant to two, to a social and built environment. The two, uh, example of the social environment is civic engagement, is being able to have a place where seniors can go and socialize. The built environment is housing, is the green spaces, is, is recreation centers, things such as that, we can go to the next one. Okay, and so, this is where the rubber hits the road. What does this word mean? And forward on the right slide, yeah. The benefits of becoming an age-friendly community. Oh, I can't read it. Community engagement.
That's okay. There's a multitude of benefits of being a part of an age-friendly community. Guidance from national experts, like I said, this is a part of the World Health Organization, and like you've seen, there's over 290 communities throughout the United States a part of this. It hopefully encourages our communities to age in place. Opportunities for partnership, Miami-Dade County, their county has joined the initiative, and all their local municipalities come together and share ideas amongst themselves. They share tools and resources and things like that. Public recognition, being on the map, being on the map with AARP, being on the map with the department and the World Health Organization. It also breaks down that intergenerational barriers. I'm so happy to be a part of your intergenerational presentations and representing, you know, the older adults and the children today. And access to the AARP volunteer network is so important. So it's really coming together, and this is really a growing initiative across the United States. Next slide. Entering the network, so entering the network, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Entering the network is the first step. And usually, you create a core group. It has to be the mayor who signs the letter to enter the network through AARP. But there has to be some champion involved, it can't be all the city, we try, like she mentioned, part of the fire department. And once you enter the network, then you begin to plan. The first, before entering the, if you look back on what you've done, that is age-friendly, whether it's for seniors or whether it's for young people... that is age-friendly, whether it's for seniors or whether it's for young people, things to make your community more livable. And you fill out a bike or a survey regarding that information. And once you enter the network, the first two years is planned. The first and second year planned. The third and fourth year, you begin the implementation process. And the fifth year, you evaluate and then you begin. You don't have to work on eight domains at one time. You can choose the one that is impacting the community the most at that specific time and work on that one. And once you complete that one, you know, you do surveys and you assess the whole community. But you don't have to work, that could be part of your plan. One year you work on this, and then the next year, after you've evaluated, you begin to plan on your next step. So is that the last one?
Just like to mention, you know, don't let the community survey scare you off. The AARP really walks communities through that. Dr. Kathy Black, who is part of the Age Friendly Sarasota and has really been a champion in Sarasota County, is really, she has come on part-time with AARP, and she is taking new communities under her wing and walking them through the survey process. And there's a multitude of ways to do surveys. You can survey your community at health fair events, email, through email, at events like this. There's a multitude of ways of doing that. But entering the network really just involves, you know, like Jerome said, doing that initial application and that letter of intent to be a part of the initiative.
If it's something that interests you and you can designate someone a contact person, we will provide them with more information, examples of other cities in Florida, what they've done, what their application looked like. And as she said, Kathy Black, who's with the University of South Florida, is an expert in livable communities. She's been doing it for almost 10 years now.
And I have given you all folders with a lot of this information. Is there any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Concerned agenda, for the minutes 2000, July 2018, July 25th, 2018. Do you want to make a motion? Make that motion. Second. For those in favor, say aye. Aye. Close. Regular agenda. 5A canvassing returns.
These are just the terms that we had from our, the actual official results that we had from the primary election in August, so I just ask for approval.
Do you need to make a motion or service? I know you need our signatures. Do you need a motion as well?
Yes, please.
Somebody like to make that motion?
Agreed.
You'd like to make a second? For those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is this still giving you correct vote? No. All right. A resolution 2018, there's 054.
A resolution of the City of Fruitland Park appointing a city treasurer, providing the term of office, providing for an effective date.
This is to reappoint. To be a city treasurer. Does anybody have any questions?
No comment, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Last time we did this, we did evaluation sheets. I'll not be finally doing tonight for this, but I would highly recommend in the future, before you do this, evaluation sheets are sent out and we evaluate the employees before we do this.
I agree, sir. Let's see if we could approve this next time, and perhaps we should somehow make a motion that before this gets done next time, the evaluation sheet sent out to us next year. Somebody like to make motions or approve? I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018 54. Second. For those in favor, I actually call Rolster.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes. Resolution 2018, there's 055, city attorney appointment.
A resolution of the City of Fruitland Park appointing a city attorney, providing for the term of office, providing for an effective date.
Again, this is for appointing Anita, city attorney again. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second. Can you call Rolster?
Vice Mayor Gunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
And Commissioner Shaw?
Resolution 2018, there's 056, city clerk appointment.
A resolution of the City of Fruitland Park appointing a city clerk, providing for the term of office, providing for an effective date.
Same thing, this is for Esther. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second. Can you call Rolster, please?
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunter?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, can I go back? To the attorney?
Yeah, hang on. Let's do this and we'll go back to attorney. Say yes and well, or say your vote.
And Commissioner Shaw?
Yes. Yes, right.
On the attorney, did you give us a new contract?
Um, no, I have not. The contract was that you could renew it annually according to your fiscal year. So it was continued until September 30th, 2016, and then it may be renewed for additional 12-month periods to run with your fiscal year.
Current rates?
At the current, at the same rate.
Okay.
Yeah. It provides in there that for the first four years, there's no changes to the rate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I believe we're going to table Resolution 2018, there's 033, my correction. We can't believe that or no?
I didn't think so. I thought just the main budget, your mileage, and your, because this is a budget amendment to your current budget.
Okay. Resolution 20-
We told people that we need table.
We did tell people we're going to table.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know.
It was asked if they wanted, they wanted to go through this, so why don't we table this? Resolution 2018, there's 033. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to table.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
For those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed?
And this is to the next Friday meeting?
It's the next Friday meeting.
Okay.
Resolution 2018, there's 057, utility rate study assessment, BASH.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fruitland Park, Florida, adopting a civil engineering services proposal agreement or utility rate study between BASH and the City of Fruitland Park related to water, wastewater, and stormwater utility rate studies and project administration, administrative services concerning the same, providing for an effective date.
You want to train this guy?
Yes. I've got a new proposal. Broken down. He asked me references that BASH had done work for, BASH has done this with Mount Ork, Taverri, and Matilla, and with Yoah. By way of how it works, BASH does not do the economic portion of the rate study. They subcontract with another firm. They go out and get prices. They went out and got two prices from two different firms. One firm was Wildin, who came back with a proposal to do the economic portion for $35,000. The second proposal was from GovRates. They've worked with GovRates before. They've worked with Wildin before. GovRates came back with a not-to-exceed $19,800 for the economic portion of the rate study. The total cost of the rate study is $22,000. BASH has a 10% administrative fee. They do all the billing. They attend all the meetings. They help acquire the information for GovRates. GovRates is a national firm. Their located main office is in Castleberry, Florida, but they do this on a national scale. They're a very big company. And they come highly recommended from BASH. The second portion of this proposal, just the $5,000 portion, is strictly to do the capital improvement portion of the study. What they do, they go in, they look at all our capital improvements, they come out, see where we're going, cost it out. They have to know where we intend to go over the next one to two years immediately, but over five years. And they'll cost that out, and that'll become part of the rate study and be included in the recommendation for rates. That's how the process works. This is the proposal. There are other companies, if you wanted to bid this out, other engineering firms out there who do this work. They, of course, would contract with somebody like either Wildin or GovRates to do the economic portion of the rate study.
So other engineering companies do the same thing as BASH. They don't do it themselves?
The economic portion will go out, they'll go subcontract with a company that's expert in that field. And that's how it performs.
Anybody have questions for Gary? Want this?
How much of Wildin's?
$19,800.
No, Wildin's $35,000.
No, I'm sorry, $35,000 for Wildin.
Okay.
$19,800 for GovRates.
All right. Then how much is $44,000?
We're only using one.
Or one, or the other?
We have to use their bids.
Okay.
So BASH, of course, is going with the lower bid.
BASH would recommend going with GovRates. They say both firms, I've talked to BASH, I've talked to Dwayne Booth about this. He says both firms do good work. He was, he's worked with Wildin before. He's worked with GovRates before. You'll get the same product. You'll get the same type of work. He's just surprised that the variation of $15,000 would cost.
Has anybody in staff contacted Mount Ork, Taverri, and Matilla and ask them how they did, what the process was, did you go over the budget? Do we have anything other than what comes from BASH that just comes into good company?
This is a not-to-exceed.
It's not the question I'm asking. I'm asking, has staff done their research and checked to see if it's a quality company or not?
No. Just got this actually, this came in this morning, so now we have.
I don't want to happen to us on this, what happened with the sewer treatment plant.
Anybody else have any questions, Gary?
The only other question I had was, is there any advantage to just go directly to GovRates? There's GovRates locked out now and non-compete because they did this through, are there other companies that through a little bit of research could be identified that do the economic portion of the rate study? Which is, in my mind, that's, that's the bulk of the whole rate study, is the economic portion. I wasn't even thinking about the capital side. I mean, I can see where an engineering firm would bring skill sets to the table. On that side, I don't know that I'd get their surcharge for the handling of the process to-
Administrative.
Yeah.
I answered that very question.
You asked that very question?
I did. I asked that of BASH because I told them that question's going to come up tonight. Why do you charge 10%? Why is there-
Why are we using you? Why are we not just going to-
Why are we going directly to GovRates? I said, you know, there's no reason why we can't go directly through GovRates. If we're going to do that, we should RFP it, or RQ it, or probably bid it and have more firms bid on it than GovRates and Wildin, other than giving it to BASH who's our contracted engineer.
In the other cities that I've been involved with where they do rate studies, they contract, both those cities, they contracted with Rattellis. They do the financial part. Now, they will consult, and you'll have to pay your engineer to consult with them on various things because they're most familiar with the operations and the capital improvement. They work with staff. They do work with your engineers. But they've always contracted directly with the firm that does the financial piece.
So they've contracted-
It is a direct possibility.
I'm sorry.
So they've contracted directly with somebody like GovRates?
Correct. Yes. And then you just know you have additional expenses for the work your engineer would-
Would come from BASH.
Correct.
So do we want-
Well, that could easily exceed the, what's that?
$2,200?
Yeah. See where that, you could easily book through $2,200 with GovRates calling up, I don't know how they bill, quarter hour, half hour, whatever, but you know the meter's going to be running every time that phone call goes to BASH. The BASH is saying, we'll handle it for this flat amount. So.
And they're going to have that BASH do the $10,000 portion anyway, capital portion.
But five thousand?
Five thousand.
You can write in, if that's the way you decide to go, and I would suggest that being the concern, you write in it as a not-to-exceed total to include the BASH's portion, if that's who you go with. Or on both sides, so five, the capital improvement side as well as the economic side.
After both of worry not to exceed.
No.
Which one was not to exceed?
Not to exceed is GovRates.
And you want BASH not to exceed 5,000 either?
I want the contract not to exceed 22,000 total.
Yes.
I thought it was 22,000 to 5,000.
22 for the rate study, 5,000 all BASH for the capital improvement portion.
So we want the full contract not to exceed the $27,000 amount?
Right. But both portions written out specifically here? Not to exceed $2,200 on the rate study side, not to exceed $5,000 on the capital improvement side. Unless Anita, you recommend different?
No, I mean, I think that's reasonable if that's-
I mean, if that's what you want to do. Or you can go out, you can RFP it, go out for proposals or qualifications, and see if there's other companies out there you want to deal directly with in terms of doing the economic portion of this study.
Well, just from that $35,000, I don't know.
Get it and get it now is what I'm thinking.
How long does, Mr. Mayor, how long does this process take?
Probably going to take two to three months.
I thought there was a date in here. It would be done definitely by December.
So it's about two to three months.
Curious if Commissioner Ray Nice's concerns have been satisfied with the lack of checking of references in light of the fact that it's GovRates that's going to be doing the economic portion of this. Does that, have your concerns been addressed?
No.
Okay. So you still think then that based on the experience with dealing with BASH and other projects, that there's going to be some way for the cost of this to exceed?
It's not the cost. It's the quality of work performed and received. When we hired the engineer to engineer sewer treatment plant, and it did not live up to its expectations, that's a great concern.
Who was that engineer?
Wicks.
Wicks.
So it's not BASH? We've been using BASH since then. Have we had any problems with BASH?
Underestimates a lot. But this is a not-to-exceed, so I'm satisfied with that. I just wondered how the other four or five cities got along with GovRates? Did they do a good job? Did they not do a good job? Just like when I did the research on the contractors to build the new library, I was surprised at the information I received when I called those references.
Is this something that could be dealt with on next Friday's special meeting? Or is that already locked in for budget stuff only to give staff time, Gary time, to check references?
I have a question. Do you trust BASH to make the judgment call on having GovRates? Or do you want Gary to double-check GovRates?
Have checked cities that they've done the work for.
Have Gary double-check? We'll table this if you want to table it to Friday.
Just check the cities, the references that BASH has given for this specific type of work, and see if the end product was satisfactory.
I don't know. There's so much BASH that is GovRates.
That's who we're asking. We can get more references on GovRates as well. It'll be-
There's no guarantee, unless I miss something. There's no guarantee that GovRates was who BASH brought to the table for those other cities. You're obviously using two different ones.
They're probably going to use whoever, next time I have-
They're brought to low bids, too.
So does somebody want to make a motion to table this?
Move the table.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. For those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
They stayed right there with the last one.
Yeah, let's table the next one.
Sorry, I missed that.
We're going to go into the public hearing portion. Gee, first reading and public hearing order 2018, there's 020. This has been withdrawn. Does somebody like to make a, do we need to make a motion to withdraw it, or is it? Continue it?
Yeah, if you don't mind continuing, then.
Would somebody like to make a motion to continue this?
Continue or table it?
It's the same thing. That's why I say the-
Time, time's public hearing.
Take it, take it. Take the table.
Do we have a second?
Second.
For those in favor, say aye. When are we tabling it to?
Just till we pull it back out?
Do we need a date to table it, or?
Yeah.
Okay. This one will be table two. Resolution 2018, there's 035, on the OTO 2018, 2019 adopted fire rate assessments. Does somebody like to make a motion to table this to next Friday? Does somebody like to make a motion to table this to next Friday?
Make a motion, table.
We have a second.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
First reading and public hearing, resolution two thousand eighteen to zero five two fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen tentative millage. Would somebody like to make a motion to table this? We have a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
First reading and public hearing, resolution two thousand eighteen to zero five three fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen tentative budget. Somebody like to make a motion to table? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did any guests from any public, this was a public hearing. If anybody from the public has any comments on those items we just tabled? End of public hearing, officers report, city manager.
Anything about the fire, senior, or community, I'm trying to contact at Leesburg about the heater for the pool. Leesburg informs me at this point they are, if it's not their intention to sell the heater, they may reconsider, but there's no sale of the water.
Thank you, there's no developments to report on the two notices of claims that are outstanding. The electric franchise agreement, we had talked about that in the context of some cities are passing ordinances that require infill housing to do underground utilities and you were concerned what your franchise agreement said about that. There is no language in the franchise agreement that talks about it. For it to happen, we would have to have a discussion with the city of Leesburg. Currently, they're allowed to run wire lines wherever in the city. December of this year is your last, is when you're supposed to purchase the system, unless you tell them otherwise. They have provided Gary an extension to extend that for an additional five-year period. So I think that will be coming back on a future agenda for consideration.
And those are big concern.
Yes. And Gary and I had a telephone call on Tuesday with attorney Glenn Thomas. He's the FRS attorney that we've been working with. And he is waiting to talk to the bureau chief at FRS who is handling this particular case. He's gone out of the office, she was expected back in today, I hope to hear something from him, but that didn't happen, so I'm not sure. He got off with her and a little follow-up. We have a conference call scheduled, I think Monday or Tuesday with the city's adjuster to talk with them about whether they're providing coverage in this particular matter.
Scott Hyman twice this week. Scott's talked to the adjuster and he says there is coverage for this. He's told me that twice now, he did talk with the adjuster and now he wants us to talk with the adjuster directly.
We talked about the appeal with Mr. Thomas, we've talked about the third-party contract, whether that's a possibility. Chief Hules had provided me some documentation where FRS had approved that for another jurisdiction, but we were told by Mr. Thomas that that was issued just prior to the rules changing and the rules became more stringent with FRS. So it's, we're still not clear if that's a possibility or not. But he's going to explore that so that at least the city can make a decision. And I think that's it, most of your particular questions?
I do, well, another question but a comment. I spoke with Chief Hules, what is it, today's Thursday? I spoke with him yesterday, today, he was doing this. He reiterated he wants to continue to be the police chief in Froben Park. Reiterated he wants, would like, if it can be possible, to have a contract with an outside company, so he can continue for immediately. He also reiterated, and he's very private, he doesn't like things like this talked about, but he has no salary at this point. He has no retirement, he has no salary from the city of Froben Park, so he'd like us to resolve this, and I've talked to Gary and I've talked to Anita as quickly as possible. We want to get these people to move as quickly as possible, so either we can get our chief back. If we can't get him back, he needs basically to find another job. So he needs, if we can't do the contract, he's going to go out and find another job because he needs to make a living. This has depleted his retirement, so we need to move as quickly as possible, make sure that he's, you know, has a direction, he's taking care of his best that we can.
And I've been in communication with him, he keeps in contact and, you know, I've let him know that we talked to the attorney and he is working on finding out whether a third-party contract is something that would be allowed or if it's not, because I know he needs an answer on that. Obviously, it comes back to you for a final decision, but, and he, the attorney also recommended that, and I passed this on to the chief as well, that both he called the accounting department at FRS and the city called the accounting department at FRS and let them know, we received the letters, we understand there's money to be repaid and we are working on that. He did not, you know, he told us they don't expect you to write a check right away to make that happen, but we need to at least acknowledge we've received it. And he was going to provide us, once he talked to the bureau chief, a particular person in the accounting department that we should be speaking to. And I told Chief Hules I would pass that on to him as well.
And this is one of the problems, and this goes back to the memo Janine sent out. Everybody gets different answers, and he had a different answer from FRS because he was told that until that money's paid back, you cannot see if there's a retirement, but the lawyer said something completely different. So every time we're getting different answers from different people and the head doesn't know what the deal is going with FRS. And I think this is, there are mistakes made by both parties here, but I think dealing with FRS is, it sounds like a nightmare. It sounds like dealing with Medicare, you can never get a good answer from, from a single person. But I think we need to find the proper people and get this settled as quickly as possible so he can move on with his life here, I would like him back in the city. And if he can't be here for six months, he needs to find himself something else.
I talked to Senator Baxter's office and today they're working on it. They're strongly encouraged and I've talked to them, they've reached out to chief to, to go through the appeal process. They feel it's worthwhile. So I know there's different opinions on that, but they felt it was very worthwhile to go through it.
I think he needs to go through the appeal process. I think this is injustice. We just got a letter today from the city that Mr. has from the most central chiefs, we know the chief, the chief's behind him. This is injustice of what happened to him and what FRS is doing. To me, this is almost like, I've been putting money in a 401K for the last past thirty years and I made a, I won't say typograph it, but I made an error and now all the money that I put in, you're taking away from me, plus you want to pay my salary back, and it is completely ridiculous. I could see some penalty, I could see a slap on the wrist, I could see something, but the magnitude of what they're trying to do is egregious.
Turning for us not to pay the bills that we received, so to talk to accounts, he said they're not looking. Everything's negotiable. They don't want penalties, they don't want, they're going to want to talk, every dollar's negotiable. He says, don't, everything's computer generated, don't respond to the computer generation, meet with accounts. That's what we intend to do. This has been pumped up from who the chief's dealing with to the bureau chief. We received confirmation from FRS that they've accepted his retirement. He was told by the person he was dealing with, they didn't accept his retirement. So, you know. But as of, as of today, we confirm they've accepted his retirement. As of two days ago, they did not. We have a lot of conflicting implications. And this is all from FRS, it's not from other sources other than FRS.
Yes, sir.
May I weigh in, Mayor?
Please.
So at the last meeting, it appeared to me that Commissioner Ray Nies was knowledgeable, had some knowledge about this case and some comments that he made. I was slow to come up to speed. I wish he would have explained it better, what he might have known at that time. I really don't know what he knew at that time because I've yet, you can't talk to him, so I, but here I'm going. But on Friday morning, I'm like, that man knew something about this situation. I was not of the same, I will tell you, up until then, I was of the opinion that this was a situation where Mike Hules was going to have to pay this money back to FRS. But then in my research, and it took me about an hour, only an hour, I was just Googling, retirement from FRS and reemployment. There's a wealth of information available. And it's abundantly clear, abundantly clear, that seeking reemployment with an employer that participates with FRS is a huge no-no, don't do it. One consultant on their website has it in a huge letters, no exclamation point. If you do it, here's what's going to happen. And what they say is going to happen is exactly what's happened. So I don't know how it could have been missed, but clearly it was missed, but he received some information that he failed to document. But I'm of the opinion, he never ever should have applied for the position, nor should the city have entertained his application.
FRS again?
Hold that thought.
Well, I'll come back to it, but that appears to be, and I'm still rocking along doing this research until I hit a page that made me lose the color in my face, when I came to understand that the city is jointly and separately liable for the, for the demand letter that Chief Hules has received from FRS. We are linked, we are, and I'm going to defer, I could, I could give it to you in very simple terms. It says the claimant goes after the one with deep pockets. Now, jointly and several, if that's not adequate, I'll defer to the attorney, but that's how I've always explained it when I'm selling insurance, when, when someone's asking about a tort liability claim. If you get yourself into a contract where you are jointly and severally liable, the other person can be completely at fault, but because you have deep pockets, you're joined with them at the hip. And that obligation, that person's obligation is now your obligation because of a contract. You are contractually obligated and thank you, FRS, that's where we are as a city. And I like, is this real? Is this true? I'm on the phone with Anita. Anita, is this true? It's true. That's where we're at with this financial. And I'm all about, I'm with you, Mayor, where I want to be emotionally. I am completely, I'm shaking in my boots a little bit about what the financial implications of this could be to the city.
Well, the one thing that we are lucky with, with Gary's talk to our insurance agent, is that.
Let me speak to that. I think Gary, I think Gary wanted to hear that, and here's what, okay, I better disclose this. I've known Scott Hyman for, we went to high school together, okay, so I've known him forever. I texted Anita on Friday morning before eight o'clock after the last meeting, scrambling in my mind, what can we do? And it dawned on me, wait a minute, we've got employment practices liability insurance. That may be what saves us. She goes, I instructed Gary to report the claim. So I called Scott Hyman that day. We eventually caught up with each other, he goes, yeah, it was, it was called in, but it really didn't seem like much. I said, it's lunch. It's different than how it was, was called in. So I started explaining the situation, yes, they have met, yes, he has talked to the adjuster. But you're always going to hear this from an agent, an agent's going to say, I'm not an attorney and I'm not an adjuster. But that's actually what he has said to our city manager, even though he's talked to the adjuster for the claim, that we may have coverage, we have coverage, we have a policy that has language in it that says you have not only employee benefits liability, but we have employment practices liability insurance. So there may be coverage from either one. But the claimant, there has to be an actual claim filed, there has, there has to be some triggers that I'm not sure there have been triggered yet for this to go deeper, and it is not. Back to your point, it is not a quick process. So my concern is with an FRS bill out there, maybe it was computer generated, I don't, you know, maybe it was. But I know the sixty, I know the sixty-nine thousand dollar bill that came in had a thirty-day due, due in thirty days.
That's exactly what we talked to the attorney about.
And that's the one that you talked to the attorney and said?
We said, we have to.
So just so you know, both of those insurance policies do not cover, they do not insure taxes and penalties. You'll understand there are, there are limitations in play here. That, that it might be our safety net, but it might not be. So you have a contingent liability that I just wanted to make sure tonight everyone was aware of.
Were we talking to the adjuster? More I think.
Two of them.
So you're going to be there, Anita, when we talk to the adjuster?
Yeah, we're going to have a telephone conference.
First, Mayor? Mr. Bell? Tell him to give my name and my comments.
I don't have anything else to report.
Public comments, reserved for members of the public, bring up matters of concern, opportunity for praise. Action may not be taken by the city commissioner at this meeting, further questions may be answered by staff. I'm ready for the public. Just state your name and address, sir.
Hi. My name's Dan Shookham, I write a local political blog here in Lake County called FiscalRangers.com. Been doing it for twelve years, go to the county meetings, go to the school board, but have not been here in a while. This issue has come up with the villages, so it put you on my radar, so I came here and made me a video. And I'll be here Friday. And actually, I would like to say kudos. I've seen meetings where they've had people just get really angry because they're overcrowded and push them out. And I was waiting for the fire marshal to show up, and sure enough, then everybody went out. But you guys made a sensible decision and just created a new venue to discuss the issues there and that. So I think that's really good from your viewpoint, from your standpoint. What I wanted to recommend, a couple, three things, just because I've been here before, is I want to recommend that you consider seriously doing videos of your meetings. City of Mount Dora does it with a cell phone. The communications director, the, she just sets this up on a tripod and does a video that's live on Facebook, it's streaming. And so it's there, you don't even have to edit it or anything. The city of Yucus makes videos of their meetings, the city of Leesburg makes videos of their meetings. There are some cities that do not, like Taverries, for instance. And now the county, they've always made meetings of their, their regular meetings, but now they are adding meetings of their planning and zoning committee and some of the others that are held in that main meeting hall. And I would really encourage you to do that because then if you do have a situation where you're going to have a large number of people, you can tell them while they can watch it online or afterward. And that maybe reduces the need to overcrowd your rather limited room here. The, let's see, the one thing I wanted to mention is you had a presentation here, a three E, and the young lady here is from the state, is still here, that was a presentation on this program that came from the world, not health organization, yeah, who. And I'm, I'm just going, you don't know me and I don't know you, I don't know what your political affiliations are, but I'm a conservative, I've been writing that way, I'm a fiscal conservative, first of all, but also a political conservative. And when I see AARP involved in something, the red flags go up. And I would just say that, and I started looking at buzzwords that are being used. There you're going to have safe and nurturing outlook, you're going to have social inclusion, that everything's going to be accessible, there's going to be easy access. And then there's a national expert who's going to give you direction, you, on how to proceed with creating a program like this. And I would recommend that you really seriously look at that. You have a conservative version of art that is formed right in the city next door. And I don't know how connected you are with the people, the villages and so forth, but I would think that you would look at that because I've, I've spent twelve years doing this. I've looked at Lake Common Core that went into the schools. I looked at, you have CBG grants, do you have them here? Okay, then Barry, you don't have any for the city? Okay, good, because a lot of cities in the county do. Okay, good, because a lot of cities in the county do, and buried in that is a requirement that you do a study, and they're talking about studies. And when they talk about studies, then there's going to be things in there that are going to have maybe some political viewpoints, and I would caution you about that. That's all I can say at this point. And thank you, it's a good, well-run meeting. You handle that well with a big mob.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else with a public comment? There's none. Mr. Reynolds?
Um, first, it's a little awkward saying this one, but we got a couple of emails, or I did, regarding Mr. Hertz and Mr. Kurt passing, and I greatly appreciate that. But what upset me more is last Wednesday, I saw my brother came by my store room and talked to us. He told me he took Pete to the hospital, to the doctor's office in Orlando to have surgery on his shoulder. And I said, Pete who? Pete that works for the city. And Thursday, I came in the city hall to pick up my paperwork, and I meet Pete in the parking lot because he was dropping off paperwork. I had no idea that Pete was on a working comp. I had no idea that Pete had to have surgery for injuries sustained during work, and I just hope the city's taking care of Pete, not just what the fourth one's comp, fourth one's paid, that make up the difference, because I think he'd been here almost 30 years. But I said from day one, when I came here, because a city employee is hurt or injured, I'd like to know about it. And I'm very disappointed I had to hear about it from my brother sitting in my office. Now, Mayor, I want to thank you, and this will drop out a lot of what I was going to talk about, for supporting Chief Hewlitt. I'm very, very concerned, if we're going to do a third-party contract, which it appears I'm in consensus we need to do it, I believe you are in consensus we need to do it, and as I was talking to the calendar today, I got a call from the chief, and I found out, and he is very close to himself. He has zero income. He had to fight his architect and contractor to get, has to sue him to get into his new house. And the story he told me was, it just made me sick. So I just don't want this to end up to be what how always happens, and we're dragging our feet. Stay on top of this as fast and as seriously as we can. Now, back to how did it happen? I've been doing the same thing since I got the first email about it. And I, unfortunately, it had to overburden Esther, who was doing some research for me. And I went and pulled the resolution 2014, or Esther did, and sent it to me, 2014, 15, and I'm passing them out to all of you. Just read this, it's only two pages, Esther can send you the whole thing. Just take a pop on and pass them on, that should be enough for everybody. And this is the resolution where the city went to FRS. And talking with our attorney today, and I agree wholeheartedly with her, if anybody in this city talks to FRS, immediately type up an email as to your conversation and send it to that person, so we have a copy of it. It is imperative that you talk to one person on the phone, you don't talk to the right person. If you read section two in what I handed you, it says, once we went to FRS, everyone must join FRS. You read the second page that I sent you there, in the third paragraph, it repeats it, and it says, each employee filling a full-time or part-time regularly established position. Why was there an issue about part-time people shouldn't be entitled to it? In 2015, on February 12, 2015, our city dropped the document. Now, my next question that comes up, and I don't know if I'll get the straight answer to it, is if we had this since February 2015, and it's very black and white, says, if you join our agency, you're going to be in FRS. How did the chief come to enter our pension plan? How did he not enter FRS, but our city entered him into our pension plan, which should have been closed when we entered FRS? Is that not correct?
We still got both pension plans. Anybody prior to was allowed to stay in the pension plan.
Anybody prior to, he wasn't here prior to.
I understand. The chief was given a form, not the, the FRS form, but he was given a form that basically spelled that out and told him he signed up for one or the other. And it did stay on there, it was compulsory, and it did the rates, did the whole thing, wrote it down, police verses, and then it also talked about the ICMA claim. At that point in time, when chief went and signed up for pension, he signed up for the ICMA claim, under the belief that he was not required to, to go back into FRS.
Our city had this in their file.
I understand that, but the chief has expressed more than one time that he was told directly by FRS that he was, he was okay not to do it, he moved into a different.
And I asked him today on the phone, I said, well, then, with this, why didn't our city manager tell you, you have to join FRS? And our city manager told him he could join our pension plan, we don't have to join FRS. So that's one issue that we have to overcome, and that's to the attorney to find out. But I sent that through your information. This, you pass it down, you all seen it, you can throw them away, it just goes to what I'm going to tell you in the next thing. These are budget amendment transfers, where if money's going to be transferred from one fund to another fund, our finance director puts that out to us, and these are all the ones that passed this year, and it's the only ones I could find in my records, and I still have on my computer. And that's just our budget transfers. When we're going to transfer money from one fund to another, that's where we look at it. So, oh yeah, we approve, we don't approve. These aren't highlighted very good, but in the last meeting, I asked, when did we find out about this, when did, how long have we known about this? And the only answer I could get out of last meeting was June. How much did it cost? Minimal amount. A minimal amount was what I was told, I repeat it, so I don't care if it was $10, and the newspaper got it correctly, because I did scream, I was upset. But I still didn't know, until the next day when the finance director sent an email out, $33,758, which $27,069 we had to come up with. And it, and we came up with it. I went back to June's budget agreement, financial statement that we were given, and these are the sheets, totally $27,169, that money in, on April 30th was transferred into retirement, money in each of the categories, money was transferred into cover, not the six employees that were part-time, but the 18 employees we were not paying into the retirement system. That was April 30th. That wasn't June.
May 3rd, right?
Top of the page is budget amendment, April 30th, 2018, came to us in June. My question is, and what I'm upset about is, we do budget transfers, but this budget transfer never came to this commission and said, oh, by the way, we have a deficit of $33,758, I've got to make up $27,000, and I'm going to, I don't know where the money came from, I sat on this for three days, I said, it's not my job. Where did the money come from that we transferred this into that?
You have a budget amendment, I have a budget amendment here for May 30, 2018.
That's for police officers position, correct?
It was for retirement of four part-time officers. Anita, what is this amount, a $37,000?
Thirty-four.
So is this the money that Commissioner Reynolds is talking about from this May 30?
Yes, it was the mid-year with all the...
It was mid-year. We didn't know about the retirement until June. I was told in this meeting, it was June.
The, the audit began in April, that's when they started calling us and asking for documentation.
I asked in this last meeting, when did we notify, when did this start? I was told June.
That's when we got the official findings.
And how did we know what the fund amount was, and we transferred it in April?
We did not know for sure what the amount was.
Well, how did we imagine to transfer the exact amount?
No, we didn't. It was like, I don't remember, $27,000?
You transferred $27,169.
Right, but it ended up being $33,000.
That was initial. I assumed, since it was 33,758, that we had some money left over. That's what I assumed, not an assumption, I mean. I, I'm just, it aggravates me dearly when I'm not given the information that I requested, or I'm given partial information, or I'm given false information. There is also, in that same month, I don't have copies, you're going to have copies of this, I don't have copies of it. In the same month, on April 30th, in other government services, we deleted $32,000 out of that account. We did away with that person, I guess. I assume that's where the money came from.
No, that was the janitor, it went to contractual to cover the service we hired, and we let the janitor go. That was a...
We have in our charter, section 607. Let me make sure, I might not have a copy to get out of my car. I have the key one. And the highlight area in the bottom section says, the city manager shall report to the city commission without delay indicating the estimated amount of any deficit and remedy action taken by the city manager to eliminate the deficit and the recommendations of the city manager as to other steps to be taken. The city commission shall then take such further action it deems necessary to prevent any deficit and for the purpose and may be resolutions reduce one or more of the appropriations. This was a huge mistake that was hidden. I don't know if it was hidden from the other commission, but I can assure you, it was hidden from me. It did not come up in a budget amendment openly and honestly. When asked how many people were involved, it was six, not even ten.
That was my, I thought that was my mistake.
You know, and after the meeting, I was livid. A minimal amount, minimal amount. What's a minimal amount? And I thought about it for days, and I finally said, minimal amount is a spending...
I thought it was a deliberate cover-up. I even speculated on the motivation. The individual that made the mistake was dearly beloved by a lot of the staff. In my mind, I could see where there would be a desire to try and cover for the mistake that was costing this amount of money, which Pete, of course, denied. So I was prepared to talk about it tonight before it got to this stage, to say it's for the next commission, because think back, Commissioner Reynolds, to the five of us doing evaluations. Only two of us offered any kind of constructive criticism. Three of the five said, job well done. What?
Two, one didn't do a evaluation.
Yeah, so I believe what you're going to find is, you've got three that are going to continue to serve, who are going to be okay with the job they do. And Commissioner Bell, our recall, said he's, he's doing a good job, he's way better than what we've had in the past, and that seemed to be the criteria, the measuring bar to which the performance was being measured. If I was to continue sitting in this chair, I would have a completely different approach to how I'm going to vote. But in my opinion, I don't need to block this vote at this stage of the process. You three going forward, I'm going to have to figure out how to deal with it. So when the time comes to vote, I'll be voting, what's the motion, motion's term, so that's my explanation on my vote when it comes time to vote.
Thank you. Pastor?
Commissioner Lewis?
No.
Commissioner Bell?
No.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Pastry Ganser?
No.
And Major Shale?
No.
Oh, no, I'll have some, that's me.
Commissioner Lewis?
Always interesting, four years following Commissioner Reynolds. I got completely thrown off last time by, by what Commissioner Reynolds had to say, but tonight I want to say, nobody digs like Commissioner Reynolds digs. And having heard that the amount was $33,000, at that, at that point in time, I wasn't sure when the budget amendment, the mid-year budget amendment had gone through. I later found out it was the May 10th meeting when I was absent. So I, it was May 10th was when it came in. So I came in, Esther assisted me in getting set up so I could listen to the recording, because I was certain that an amount that large had to be talked about. It should have been presented when the city finance director was explaining the mid-year budget. So I listened to it. That amendment was $829,000. The vast majority of it, and the explanation that came was grants were pulled in of a certain amount, and then also $355 to cover IRMA expenses. You can sort of hear her say that overall it was a reduction of some $15,000, but I've made a note here that that really wasn't clear. I wasn't clear, I wasn't able to hear exactly what was said. But at no time during the meeting was this, and this was a significant, $33,000, this was a significant budget adjustment, and it was never presented to this board that these dollars were being moved around. Yes, you have found it, you have made copies of it. Where it was, it was in the detail, which the city finance director provides a lot of detail, and the clerk, city clerk includes that. That's why we have 200-page agendas sometimes, because there's so much of the financial information that you would have had to go through and find, and then, as you did, you circled here. It never should have been handled that way, in my opinion. An amount, I mean, we talked about, and it's brought before, it's a $750, with something moved around and some police pieces of equipment was sold or something. So here we are, a $33,000 just slides through. So it was pretty, yeah, I was, I was chapped pretty bad, pretty strongly, right? It just was, it's just not how it should be done. I mean, it's, it's this position of trust. I mean, we have to trust this information that flows, and it did not flow. And then to be coupled with a, with a big bill, sternest in the face, I was significantly irritated by the whole, whole situation. But we're in it now, and I don't know that you can get it. I'm not of the opinion that you're going to be able to get it resolved quick enough for the needs of Michael Hewlitt. So I'll have to say this thing.
First, Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bell? Just give it.
Um, I haven't gone through, um, different, been, been in a position for this long. I'm with, kind of with Ray on this, that, with our past chief, that it's going to be a prolonged process. I know investigations and, and party to win myself, it can go for a while. I'm not sure, I understand everybody, the emotion, yes, we like it, so, but truthfully, I don't believe it's going to happen. Different topic, the sheriff is going to be speaking at the, the Vegas City's forum. Topics are going to be, you know, he's going to, he's going to touch on dispatch, he's going to touch on radios, and our... and our SRO officers in school. If anybody's interested, I'd suggest talking about it. And certainly, I'd like to push sponsors night. It's on October 3rd, if you can make it. It's a good time.
All right.
Yes, Mayor? Well, the police chief would just have to wait and see and see how it plays out. On the city manager, like Mr. Bell said, we've been here for quite a while. And I think we've been through five or six managers. This has been one of the best managers we've had. Can he improve? Everybody can improve.
And that is it. That's enough.
One thing I will say is, I remember this budget amendment, but I do lots of times. And most of the time, and why sometimes I don't say much up here, is I go before to try and gather information that I know beforehand. I remember looking at this and workers' comp, I wondered, or retirement, I wondered. And it had said about FRS. But the whole FRS mess, it begins with the person who was a finance officer at that time. With Chief Yulis's contract, who was the attorney at that time? Scott. I would expect, besides the city manager, who doesn't use the retirement system that often, I would expect either the finance director at that time or the city attorney at that time to catch the fact that we're entering a contract that we should not have. That's what I have. The city attorney, I expect, to catch that contract. So who should have put that contract? To me, should have been the city attorney, not the city manager. But the city attorney should know enough that we're entering a contract with somebody that's going to retirement system that they shouldn't. And so should the city treasurer at that time. There was a long line of errors here that were made on the chief's part and on the city's part. There's culpability on both sides. Unfortunately, some of the players are not here anymore. I, FRS is part-time. We moved back in April or May when this came through. That's, you know, it needs to be dealt with. Hopefully, it'll be dealt with easily. It's not going to be dealt with easily. I think the chief should be dealt with. Either we need to tell him the contract is going to work, a third-party, and find out if it's going to work. If it's going to work, then we have to see if you guys want him back. Either way, we need to do it quickly so he can get on with his life. That's what I mean, quick. Not necessarily this whole FRS mess is going to go away, but telling the chief what the chief needs to do. Right now, we're in a relationship where he's hanging on to us and wants to come back here. If there's no possible way he can come back here, if that third-party contract won't work, you have myself, Commissioner Reynolds, who are willing to bring him back. If we don't have three votes to bring him back, he's not going to come back. You can't come back. So I think first, you've got to see if the third-party contract will work. Do that quickly. And then we have to see if we want him back. That's what I'm talking about quickly right now. Not necessarily this whole thing, but his limbo of, "Do I need to go and get a job at a place that doesn't have FRS and start over?" That's what I mean with the chief. I'd love to see him back here, but that's what I mean by quickly. That's all I've got to say about that. I have a funny story, a lightened story I should tell you guys. It might up the mood a little bit. Last Thursday, while you were all probably eating dinner at home by yourselves, I got to have dinner with Rick Scott and Mike Pence. When Rick Scott saw me, he recognized I was from Fruitland Park, and said, looked at me and said, "Fruitland Park, fastest-growing city in Florida." And I looked at him and said, "No, fastest-growing city in the country." And Mike Pence was standing there, and he slapped me on the back. He said, "Good job, guys." He's like a pata boy from the Vice President, Mike Pence. Mike Pence also said, "Please call me Mike." And I said, "No, sir, I will not." "I'll call you Mr. Vice President." And that's how I addressed him. And by then, Secret Service has swept me off to go somewhere else. Exactly. And I went to grab my cell phone at one point, and I thought I was going to be shot. Never seen so many Secret Service agents and police officers in my life. All right. Dates to remember. Tomorrow is Movie on the Lawn. They're going to see Avengers: Infinity War, which is good. That means I don't have to rent it for my children that can ask me to see it. Tomorrow is the Lake County Lega City's, I think we were saying this, Peyton's going to be there talking, which will probably be really good. There will be an emergency medical services board meeting September 25th. September 26th is an MPO meeting. September 27th will be our regular city commission meeting. But of course, next Friday, which is the 21st, we will have a city commission meeting special at 6:00 PM. It will be held at United Community Methodist Church, which is across the street. And it is, it noticed the address will be on there. October 3rd, Lake County Lega City's sponsor night at Lake Receptions. October 12th, the Food and Law Order ordinance presentation at Lake Receptions at 12:00 PM. It should be interesting. October 12th, there'll be another Movie on the Lawn hot. October 20th will be the Trick or Trot 5K Run starting at Fruitland Park Elementary. October 24th will be another MPO meeting. October 25th will be city commission meeting. October 31st is Halloween at 6:00 PM. We'll probably discuss that more. That's as far as I'm going to go.
Mayor?
Mayor, yes. Could we have the police department moving our billboards, electronic board, to notify the public that there's going to be a commission meeting here?
If you want to do that, put on 466-8.
And maybe the day before or something, just so the people coming will know where to go. Thank you.
Mayor, please. Kind of gear up for the 27th. Yeah, be over at the church as well? Or you think we'll have it all settled down by then?
Gear up for, I'm sorry.
The meeting, the 27th, the commission meeting on the 27th.
That's going to be the second reading of this. I guess we could see if people are fine with the way the budget goes that day. And if this is a continual thing, how will we know how many people are going to come? If there's a hot-button issue, and we're not even sure if it's a hot-button issue, you know, I mean, where do we go from here? Do we set up the lobby? Do we have chairs and sound out there? I mean, we need some sort of contingency that if one day, somebody gets a bean in their bonnet and a bunch of people come here for some reason we're not aware or ready for, we need that contingency.
You should have audio. You should have seating available if possible.